Good afternoon. Today is Tuesday, December 18th, 2018, and this is a study session of the Prescott City Council. Let's do roll, please.
Mayor Mangarelli.
Present.
Mayor Protem Orr.
Here.
Councilwoman Blair.
Yes.
Councilwoman Good.
Here.
Councilwoman Lamerson.
Here.
Councilwoman Scholl.
Here.
Councilwoman Sishka.
Yes.
All are present.
All right, thank you. Let's move on to item 3A, please.
Dibble Engineering and Associates will present on the new airport passenger terminal project, including a review of Phase 1 30% schematic design and on the proposed plans for Phase 2 new terminal final 100% design.
Thank you. So, good afternoon, Mayor, Council. We continue to be in some exciting days here. Just a quick update, things are going well. Tomorrow, we're going to hit our 9,000th passenger in plainment. And we are on track to hit 10,000. We've already sold enough tickets to make 10,000 in plainments this year. We do encourage everybody, if you purchase a ticket, make sure you go because it has to be a bottom in a seat in order to be an in plainment. Just a purchased ticket doesn't count. So, we do look forward to seeing all of you. Today alone, our load factor is 98%. We only have two open seats today.
Wow.
So, this is super exciting. The outpouring of support from the community was extraordinary. And so, as we move into this really exciting discussion about the new terminal design, obviously, we want to celebrate what we've done in Phase 1, which we've completed the 30% design phase. And we have some folks here from DWL and Dibble who have been our partners on this. Michael Taylor is here from Michael Taylor Architects, Inc. Charlie McDermott's here from Dibble Engineering. And Keomi Kurooka is here from DWL. And they'll be sharing some items with you in regards to the 30% design outcomes. Also, one of the things you'll be deciding at today's session is also to move forward with Phase 2 to take us to final design. So, we can have some discussion on that as well. So, I'll give the floor to the team.
Mayor, council members. Michael Taylor with Michael Taylor Architects, 118 South Pleasant. It's really a pleasure to be here in front of you guys today. As you can imagine, the last several months have been incredibly busy with trying to put all this together in what really is a pretty short amount of time for an airport terminal, to have the visioning sessions, engage the public, do all the design, the technical aspects. And so, this is kind of a birthday of sorts where we're gift wrapping this and presenting you our final 30% schematic design package today. We're heavily invested in this with the city and excited to see where it goes from here. So, today, we're going to talk about a review, the technical workshop review, some cost summaries, next steps, and go over the design. So, as an introduction.
Go ahead.
Okay. So, here's our team. Dibble is the prime, as Robin mentioned. DWL is their subcontractor doing the architecture, the vertical. And then, I am a subcontractor to DWL. So, the three firms together form our design team. So, here's a brief graphic on where we are. We started programming back in April and May of this year. Programming is where we figure out the space needs. How big do each thing need to be? How much can we provide that FAA will help fund? So, we come up with a document that tells us what the terminal is going to be ultimately. Then, we moved into schematic designs, and that's where we start developing concepts for the mechanical systems, electrical systems. We start laying out floor plans, seeing how it will fit on a site, see how the site works with all the other things that we have to deal with, you know, existing buildings, access, things like that. So, if you look at the top of schematic design, you'll see a little dot. That's where we are today. So, we're presenting our final schematic design. Then, moving on after today and then hopefully a favorable vote, we'll move into design development. That's where we really start putting the meat into the project. We start detailing out these systems, mechanical, plumbing, electrical, how the civil aspects of the project are going to come together. We expect that that project will run about three months through February. And then, we move into construction documents, and that's what all of you are probably most familiar with, where we actually produce the final drawings and the specifications that will go to the contractor, to the city for permitting, and ultimately to help us build the project.
Marine, for clarity, do we need to be at the microphone?
Yes, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry about that. I'm really much better when I just wander around. So, as a part of the process, we had technical workshops where we engaged a committee of local volunteers, local technical experts, and those folks were brought in to help us decide what this terminal needed to be. We also held a public open house and gathered some input from the public. And then, of course, today is our council presentation. The technical workshop review, here's the attendees, again, some local professionals, some people with a vested interest in the terminal, and some city staff. Visioning meetings, the visioning summary. This shows you, on the short term, the estimate of 25,000 in plainments, the number of airlines we expect, the aircraft, and the total square footage, which is probably the most critical piece on there, of 17,924 square feet. That's where we are today. The key component is that we're under the 18,000 that the FAA will allow for funding. You'll also see on the long term, which we are not designing long term at this point, but we do want to make sure that we are designing to support that long term based on the growth that we've seen in in plainments in this community. It's unreal, and we expect that that long term is going to come quicker than any of us can think. A couple of the items down at the bottom were things that came up during the visioning sessions that helped decide what the ultimate terminal would look like and actually added a little bit of square footage to get us up to that sub 18,000 square foot number. We added a second gate, a second screening lane, and then, the airline asked for some additional office space. So, priority goals and project aspirations. Priority goals, of course, are technical aspects that we try to achieve in the building. Critical priorities, I'm sorry, I have that backward. Goals are aspirational. Critical priorities are more technical in nature, things that we're trying to make sure get included in the final design. And these are eight of the top items that came out of the visioning sessions that were included in the final schematic design. Through the visioning statement, we also created, I'm sorry, through the visioning process, we created a visioning statement. And this statement will, you're welcome to read through it, but it will actually drive the entire process all the way through construction. This is what we're trying to achieve for the city of Prescott and the passengers in this area. Summary recap. During our visioning sessions, we would take the information, we'd go back, do some design work, come back to the next session and present options. So, at one of the visioning workshops, we presented our site layout options, landscape concepts, and floor plan concepts. And I'm going to let Charlie talk a little bit on site planning.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Charlie McDermott with Dibble Engineering. I'm the Aviation Planning Manager for the firm. So, I'm going to talk a little bit about the scenarios that we looked at for the site itself. And then, in a little bit, I'll talk a little bit more about the parking and the configuration of the roadway system. This option A really represents our short-term kind of fallback position if, in the event, funding were not available through FAA or some other source. This really presents a really scaled-back site plan for the parking area, not allowing for the additional connection to the other roadway systems around the airport. So, this really is your basic layout for the site plan. This would be our preferred site plan where it shows the roadway connection to the north with additional parking and making just the flow of traffic a lot easier. So, this is what we're going to be recommending for the short term. And then, long term is just an expansion of this. You could see with additional gates on the airport terminal, allowing for four aircraft to operate. This really gives us the maximum long-term layout for the site plan and the parking. Okay? So, with that, I'll turn it back over to Michael.
Okay. So, during these visioning sessions, as I mentioned, we also got into the aspects of the building, the floor plan and the shape and size of the building. So, we presented four options to the visioning committee of possible aesthetic, you know, appearances for the outside of the facility. The one that rose to the top was this concept, a single-peak concept with some clear story. One of the main reasons was glass. We wanted a transparent building that really welcomed people in and gave them visual access to flight operations on the air side of the building. So, this is the design that we have been running with and appears in your final schematic design package. So, then, back on site, I think that's you again, Charlie.
So, looking at it from a little larger view, you can see up from the north, we have access through Deepwell Ranch would be the primary entrance to the airport terminal. Secondary entrance would be on Ruger Road. And then, another secondary entrance would be on McCurry Drive. So, if you're coming from the south, you would be able to gain access to the terminal by taking a right on all three of those roads. If you're coming from the north to the south, certainly with the roundabout, you'd be able to access the airport entrance road. The only limitation is on Ruger Road, there would be no left-hand turn if you're coming from the north to the south, but you would have the ability to take a left-hand turn at the intersection of McCurry. So, that, those would give you the three primary access points to the airport terminal, similar to what you would have today. The only addition is we would eliminate the stop sign coming through Deepwell Ranch into the airport on Crystal Lane, just to make that flow of traffic a little bit smoother. But the stop signs on Ruger would remain to control that traffic in that area. So, that gives you a little overview of the site from a little larger perspective and from a transportation perspective. Now, zooming in a little bit closer, again, as this is our recommended site plan, you can see access from the north to the south on Crystal Lane. You would be entering the terminal area on the western side, and the traffic would flow down. Traffic flow would actually be reversed from what it is today. Today, it goes counterclockwise. It would be reversed to that. So, it would go in a clockwise direction around the parking. And the reason you want to do that is so, as you're coming down that entrance road and you want to turn, make a left, a hard left, to go to the curb side, it gives you the ability to do that. So, we had to kind of reverse the traffic flow in the parking lot. In addition to that, you can see over on the, if this works, maybe it doesn't work.
There isn't one.
There we go. Right there, we have this little taxiway access point. Because of the configuration of the terminal over here and because the site is rather constrained, and we wanted to make sure that we continued, oops, how do I go back? Is that back? Okay, sorry about that. So, we wanted to maintain access to these two T-hangers. In addition to having a constrained site up through here with the roadway system, we had to provide access to, for the aircraft to the airfield. So, there's a little bit of additional expense in creating that access point here. But that gives us the ability to allow better flow of traffic from Deepwell Ranch through Crystal Drive down into the terminal. So, basically, traffic would be coming down through here, make a left to the curb side. But then, if they wanted to park, they would go in this direction to have the vehicles park out in this area. So, that's kind of the flow of it. Certainly, we could have configured the terminal in a different shape to make use, more use of the airfield, the aircraft parking apron. But we chose not to do that because we want to make sure that we can accommodate not only aircraft that are there today, but it gives us the ability to expand the apron to the north and gain additional ramp space for the ultimate configuration of the aircraft parking apron. So, it is a rather constrained site, but it was kind of a balance between preserving the existing revenue that the airport is generating and trying to get it all to fit and to get enough parking to make sure that we don't create any parking issues in the future for the traveling public. So, with that, back to Mike.
Back to me. Thank you.
So, as Charlie mentioned, I'm going to back up a slide here for just a second. The incoming off of Deepwell Ranch Road, when cars come in, the experience you have when you arrive at the airport is really important to us. Again, this is a small community. The airport's a really important part of it. So, we want people to have a good experience when they come to this airport. So, the parking is set up that you can, like Charlie said, you can either go park and walk to the terminal, or you can pull up curb side and drop people off. So, going now to this floor plan, keep that thought in mind. This floor plan represents the program as it was established back earlier this year. The colored areas represent areas that FAA will look at for funding. Areas include baggage handling, TSA screening, areas that are open to the public. So, those colors represent those individual areas that they will look at separately. So, moving on, now, we're looking at an actual floor plan of our schematic design. So, starting at the bottom, you'll see that's the curb side approach. As people pull up to drop, let's say, a departing passenger off, the first thing they see is that entry vestibule. And through the glass, they can see ticketing. Right away, you know where you're going when you get to the airport. You don't have to find your way through a maze of other spaces. You walk in that vestibule, ticketing is right there on your right. Through the visioning process, the ticketing area was actually reconfigured. One of the members of the visioning committee pointed out that it could be a congested area. So, we've rotated that 90 degrees to help alleviate that congestion. Passengers then move upward on the plan there, and they have.
Can you hit arrow and show them how the pass?
I sure can. There we go. So, here's, I'm sorry, here's the vestibule we were talking about. Ticketing is right here to the right. As you leave ticketing, there are restrooms available, landside. Landside being passengers that have not yet gone through security. And then, on landside, we have the concession and kind of waiting area here with glass looking out at those tremendous views towards Mingus Mountain.
Are we calling that a restaurant?
That is a concession area. Do you want to comment on the restaurant aspect of it?
Because the FAA only approved 18,000 square feet, we had to be really careful about how the square footage was laid out. So, what we did is we are starting with the concession being a snack bar. We could have eventually additional space in the terminal building for a full-size restaurant, but we calculated about 2,500 square feet, and that we didn't have the square footage available under the current environmental approval. We are expecting to leave the old terminal in place and go out for, you know, a bid for somebody who might like to do some improvements in the terminal building, perhaps the current operator or another one, or a teaming effort. And so, that could be a restaurant in the old terminal, which is co-located just here to the right of where this, it's within walking distance. That entity may not only operate the old terminal restaurant, but also the new terminal concession. So, that's the plan, is to open up that for an opportunity.
Okay. Thanks, Robin. So, moving on through the terminal, here we go. So, again, landside visitors can take advantage of this view. We have an outdoor patio that is under roof where they can also go out and wait for a flight with visibility of the TSA screening line. So, they can keep track of that if there's any backups or if they have free access to that. The areas to the right are all back-of-house operations, airline support, baggage handling, things like that. Those passengers then would go through TSA security screening. We have the provision here for two lines, although we're only looking at one line initially. And then, when they get on the air side, now, they've gone through security, we have a hold room, which is waiting, basically. And then, the ticket counter's here and doors out to the aircraft. An arriving passenger, of course, would come in through those same doors and have a straight shot through the building to the exit at this vestibule back to curb side. Or if need be, they can eddy out to the baggage claim. The baggage claim and the baggage handling system is one of the things that's in constant flux based on cost estimates. And there are several options here on how we might handle baggage claim. Baggage is another example, though. Here, at ticketing, you, of course, leave your bag. The bag immediately goes out to the aircraft this way, circles around. Incoming bags come in on this side and then are picked up and taken out this way. There's really no need for bags to be in the middle of the airport. So, a nice, compact floor plan with easy flow. As, one of the other things I wanted to mention here was as passengers leaving rental car counters are right here, immediately accessed. And then, of course, a hallway where they can go back and use these restrooms here. So.
What do you anticipate the holding room will hold?
People-wise?
Fifty people.
Fifty people?
Right, which is the size of our current aircraft design.
Can I go ahead and make a comment on that?
Sure.
Now, when they look at what the kind of seating should be for a 50-person aircraft, often you'll hear them say it's like 38 seats. I think with our population, we prefer to have more seats rather than less so that they could have, you know, time to wait and be able to sit down. Technically, you can see there's two doors, and that means, in essence, two gates. You could simultaneously load two aircraft if you need to. But here's the challenge. This particular design is made for 25,000 in plainments. Right now, we anticipate by 2019, we will be at 27,000 in plainments. So, the day we open the door in this facility, it will be considered at capacity. Obviously, that's why expandability was such an important point as the design team was working through this. And you can see the white spaces where there's basically cutouts. Those are under roof. So, if you could take a look here, you'll see that everything under the dotted line is under roof, which makes it pretty easy to push it out in the white spaces. So, that as we move forward, now that we have our $1 million a year in entitlements with the 10,000 in plainments, we could add in additional spaces and fill these in based on the need to expand.
So, and actually, we're going to get to expansion here in just a minute also and talk a little more on that. So, along with the floor plan, we further developed the exterior concept. So, here's an exterior view over the parking area. And this is, when it says short term, that means this is the immediate need, not showing the expansion yet. There's a more of an eye-level view of the entry. So, the curb side, bring up the cursor here, curb side drop-off would be in this area, going in that first vestibule here. This is the airside view. So, from the aircraft side, people arriving at gates 1 and 2, again, you can see the transparency, the glass that we've provided. It's an interior view coming in the front doors. And even more exciting is this little gem here. So, we'll spend some time on this if anybody has any questions. This is the vestibule. That's curb side outside right there. So, this is the main set of doors that you would come in. And as you spin around, there's your view into the terminal. You can see the concession area, the waiting out front, the two-sided fireplace, access to the outdoor patio that's landside. And this is the glass looking out at air operations and the views to the north and northeast.
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
You talked about 27,000 in plainments. What's the criteria upon which we base that we think by next year, we're going to have 27,000 people getting on an airplane in the city of Prescott?
The current load factors are such that 27,000 is perhaps a conservative estimate. I think we could be as high as 29,000 with the current load factors. We already have the bookings all the way out into March and April. Things are looking really strong. And so, we do anticipate that that estimate is pretty accurate.
And I appreciate that, Robin. But at the end of the day, you know, from a public perspective, I understand that maybe we'll have 27,000 people getting on an airplane in the city of Prescott. It may not be that those 27,000 people are from the city of Prescott. After all, that's the Prescott Regional Airport.
Absolutely.
And, you know, you can't solely describe us handling the load of people that come into the airport here based on the growth of the city of Prescott. Because while the city of Prescott may be somewhat stagnant in some of its residential growth, the entire area is growing, which is different than what this city council has purview over.
That's a really good point. If you would bring up.
Thank you for that. I'm just bringing that up.
Oh, no, it's great.
At the end of the day, I don't want all the people out there in Prescott throwing rocks at the city council because after all, we do have to handle this issue.
Yes, I do agree. If you look at the growth in Prescott Valley, for example, the housing starts over the last three years have been 233%. So, you're absolutely right. It's a regional airport, and it's going to be serving the needs of the entire county. And we have many people that are coming down right now from Flagstaff, from Verde Valley, and also from Sedona and Cottonwood. And they're all thrilled about the service as well. And we've even had some folks approach us from NAU, and they're interested in shuttles down from the university because they really like the non-stop flights we have. So, it's truly a regional resource.
And thank you. And thank you very much for acknowledging the fact that through your tutelage, of course, being our manager out there, we've had a lot of federal money come in to build that airport.
That's correct.
That airport's not limited just to the residents of Prescott.
No.
Federal money's been spent for a particular reason, okay?
Yeah.
And it's called essential air service. So, I'm just sharing it, that the public needs to hear that that airport is not limited solely for the use of Prescott, Arizona.
Absolutely. It's a really good point. Thank you, Councilmember Lamerson.
Okay, so, moving on around here, and please ask any questions that you might have on this image. But there's ticketing, two-ticket stations, restrooms, drinking fountain immediately to the side, looking back towards the back, again, concessions, waiting area. Here's the queuing for the security screening. Security screening goes off to the left there. Now, if we raise up a little bit, you can see that we're looking at a very high-vaulted space, lots of open air light. Then, we bring down a low ceiling over the TSA security area. And then, rotating to the left here, this corridor goes over to rental car baggage claim. So, any questions on that image?
The concession area would be mostly vending machines?
I think they're looking at prepackaged food. Is that correct, Robin?
Yeah, actually, it could be an operator that could do more than that. You could have a small grill in back. But it isn't going to be a lot of seating in a traditional restaurant format. So, we probably will have seating for around 25 to 30 in that area. Some will be open seating, some will be table-like. Okay?
I have a question. How are the planes going to disembark? Are they downstairs? Are we going to have a catwalk? How does that work? You know, like in Phoenix where they come out to the plane? I've seen both pictures, so I'm kind of confused of.
Sure. Do you want me to handle it?
I can think I can talk to that. But in the initial phase, we're talking about just groundboarding. And then, but we have provision for jetways in the future. The jetways are extremely expensive. And, but we do have the space and provisions for that in the future.
Okay, so, that's, that's on, could be on the horizon. Because I was looking at the door configuration, trying to figure out how you're going to do that with that door configuration, but.
Right.
Yeah. Well, actually, just so you know, a typical loading bridge, some people call them jetways, but that's like a brand name. Those usually cost about $1.2 million each. Now, some of these loading bridges have actually been covered by federal funds in, for example, Central Wisconsin Airport just got four of them funded under the billion-dollar supplemental appropriations. But obviously, our first priority is the building, the ramp space, the taxiway.
So, that's something that could come down the line.
Yeah. And often, what happens is when you get those, you often will then charge the carrier for the use of those devices. So, it is an additional revenue stream associated with that use. Okay?
Okay. Just worried about handicapped people and those types of things. I think we limit ourselves sometimes when we do certain things. So, I know there's a lot of grant money out there, and hopefully, we're looking under every rock.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so, moving on, also, as a part of our schematic package, we've presented a preliminary color palette with finishes, colors, materials. That was presented to the entire visioning committee also. So, you just mentioned future expansion, and Robin had mentioned the areas shown under roof, which are things like this outdoor patio, this front landscape area here. You can see that in our future plans, we're enclosing some of those areas and then adding on to the end of the building, continuing that linear theme. It would add additional hold space, additional customer or passenger service area, and additional baggage handling space. And we anticipate that that would take us up to the anticipated number of in plainments.
And if you pushed out into those open areas now, like that describes, what capacity for passengers would you anticipate being able to provide?
This would go back, I'm sorry, 50,000.
50,000.
Yeah, up to 50,000 in plainments per year.
Now, if I could give a clarification.
Sure.
So, some folks wanted some context with regard to future expansion. To give you an idea, Flagstaff Airport has about 25,000 square feet in its current terminal. It does have a second level in its terminal, and it's not very well utilized. They have about the same number of people within a 90-minute drive time as we do when you consider the entire region. And right now, they're close to 70,000 in plainments a year, and they have no essential air service. So, when folks say, "Well, what happens if we lose our essential air service?" Flagstaff doesn't have it, and they're still doing great, and they're actually growing. They're adding additional flights in the spring. So, we do see this 33,000-square-foot expansion, up to 50,000 in plainments, being something that we could work with for several years.
Thanks, Robin. And then, there it is, as the completed floor plan with all the expansion spaces shown too. So, again, we're not fully developing the expansion space at this point. We just want you to know that we have considered it, and it is in the planning. And there is a bird's-eye view of what that long-term expansion might look like, just continuing that gable theme with the high glass. continuing that gable theme with the high glass.
And you got to put on the top of it, everybody's hometown.
We could, if you want.
We could inside, actually, in TSA area. It's a great spot.
Yep, there's some great interior signage opportunities within this space. And this one is back to Charlie.
So this slide represents the cost summary for the terminal building. So you can see on the far left, the total cost for everything to date is 11,900,000. And if you break that down, it breaks down to about 6.5 million for just the terminal and some related costs directly associated with the terminal. The other, other related infrastructure costs, those are basically the site work around the terminal building, which includes the aircraft parking apron, the vehicle parking area, that access road that we talked about going up to Deepwell Ranch, the taxi lane connector to give access to the aircraft in those two T-hangers to the airfield. So that's around 3.5 million. So your total, and again, those are all eligible costs for FAA funding. So when you look at the sum of all of the costs that are FAA eligible, it's a little over $10 million, which is, which is nice, because then when you subtract that from the total cost of 11,900, local share would be somewhere around $1.8 million for the, for the project. So it's, it's, they're big numbers, always changing, certainly as we tweak the design, and we recognize what, what will be eligible and what may not be from FAA. But as we sit today at the 30% stage, this represents the, the costs and the eligible components of that cost. And certainly, as we move forward further in the design, these numbers, and we'll tweak a little bit, and we'll, we'll be able to provide an update. Okay?
Question.
Certainly.
Do you have an estimate of the cost to expand to 33,000 square feet?
I don't have, I don't have that, we don't have that yet.
No.
Not the ultimate, right? Yeah. But that'll come the next day, the next phase. Or if you want something sooner, we can certainly come up with a preliminary at least. But right now, because of the accelerated schedule, we're focusing on the 30% in this footprint.
Would you anticipate the amount of FAA funding to be relatively similar percentage?
It would depend on this, on the square footage and how it breaks down. But I got to believe it's going to be somewhat similar percentage-wise, depending on the configuration and the, kind of the parts and pieces of what make up the terminal, but.
We're, we're actually in really new territory, because the, the column that says 95% eligible, the center column, we're familiar with this, because this would be your traditional, what we call Airport Improvement Program guidance, which would be 95%. According to the new supplemental funding, and again, this is a really new program for small airports, a billion dollars a year is being allocated, that second column, it's up in the air. It can be up to 100% eligible. But that doesn't mean that's necessarily what they'll give you. I think the FAA has been pretty clear that it wants a significant local match. And we have discussed as much as 3.5 million as a local match, and that does include the design fee. So if it came in, just to give you an idea, Brownsville, Texas, in the first round of funding that happened a little bit earlier this year, they got $8 million for their terminal. They only asked for six, and they got 8 million. So it's not really clear yet how DC and the Department of Transportation is going to make the allocation. We expect to hear more on that, either at the end of this month or sometime next month. And then at that point, we'll have to see if we have to do value engineering and scale down, or can we go for the full amount. Okay?
And just, just an additional point on cost. In this first phase, we're doing the bulk of the infrastructure and the site improvements required for not only Phase One, but for the expanded phase. We're increasing the size of the infrastructure to support that. So the second phase expansion should be a more efficient constructed, construction cost. So next steps. Today, we're at our 30% submittal. We would expect with a positive vote from the council, we'd move into design development through the first quarter of 2019, construction documents through the second quarter, and be ready to submit to the FAA for approval and put it out to bid and permitting at the end of May of 2019, with early fourth quarter construction start. So with that, for Kyomi, and Charlie, and me, and Robin, I'd like to thank all of you for your time today, and just open it up to any questions you may have.
Questions or comments from the council?
I've got one. I always get nervous when I hear value engineering. And, you know, I can appreciate that. But on the scope of what I see here, how would you value engineer any of what you've done when you haven't put in state-of-the-art, you know, carpet, and you've got concrete? I mean, where do you value engineer something that seems to be pretty realistic upfront?
Just for example, the baggage handling system, the entire system of all the belts, is about 3/4 of a million dollars. If we went with slides instead of carousels, you can save about a quarter million dollars. So these-
Have we looked out, out and seen what is more durable maintenance-wise for the long haul? I mean, again, some of those value engineering come with less longevity for maintenance and use, opposed to paying that price upfront.
Yes.
So when you start valuing it at the end, you really didn't value it very well, because we're replacing.
Right.
So that's what I'm concerned about, whether we do it right the first time. So hopefully, Michael has pockets that will reach deep enough that we can do it right the first time.
Councilman Blair, I, you know, we assured the FAA very early on that we were willing to contribute 3.5 million towards this project. And I feel like the consensus of this council, if it takes 3.5 million of a local match to make this happen, for the project you want, you're willing to do that. I don't think I'm putting a word in anybody's mouth at this point, so.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you. So Michael, thank you for this birthday present. Thank you all. Dr. Sabatini, you've done a great job. And, and the committee, I know several are here today. So appreciate all the work that everyone's done. Things I really like. I love the wood, the stone, the contrast, all the glass. It just looks like, looks like Prescott. So thank you for that. It's beautiful. And it's efficient. It's not a, not Taj Mahal. It's simply, let's go get on the airport and enjoy our experience on the way. So thank you very much.
And, and we did seek support from other airports who've gone through the terminal design process. Our team has done a field trip to Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport, which is also another quickly growing airfield. And we've got some lessons learned from them. And I just went yesterday to Palomar Airport, which has an 18,000-square-foot terminal, and looked at their slides as opposed to baggage devices, and talked to them about the maintenance. I asked if I could see the dog walk area for the assistive dogs, but they were in before that was a requirement, so they don't have one. But we also learned some other things. They were using some reused timbers for their wood on the, you know, on the walls. And it's neat to share these ideas. And, and we also found some things to look out for. So we will be incorporating those as we continue into the design process.
Very nice.
Councilwoman Siski.
Thank you. My question is this, you know, I don't want to, I think Flagstaff overbuilt. And I don't want to do that. But it sounds to me like we've got an eight-passenger vehicle for a 10-person family. And so, you know, how are we, how are we justifying only going so far as we're going in the initial phase?
So this is a really good question. Because of the fact that the funding that's available through the billion-dollar supplemental program is a very time-sensitive program, you have to have been this far through design to be eligible. Right now, when I went to a recent conference with airports, and we asked how many are applying for the, this round of funding, only about four people in a small airport room raised their hand for this round. For the round that starts just one year from now, almost the entire room raised their hand. Why is this important? Because right now, we have environmental approval for up to the 25,000 enplanement level, which is the 18,000 square feet. If we want to go back, we are right at the edge of having to go out for a full environmental review, and it would set us back an entire year. If we go back an entire year, then we're going to be in with the whole room of people who are applying for the supplemental funding. And right now, I think we're extremely well positioned to get this first replacement terminal, which it's referred to as a replacement terminal. And then, because we've set it up all under the big roof with easy expandability, we can take that million dollars a year. And this is a really good strategy that is controlled, responsible, but also receptive to the need that right now, when you walk in from those flights, we are wall-to-wall people. Literally, they have to take turns at the baggage claim area. About eight can go out there at a time, and on a 50-seat jet, it's taken a while to even empty out the bag claim area. So I think it's the absolute best thing we can do at this point, and I wouldn't hold up. That's my recommendation.
Well, I would agree with that. What, what do you see as the timeframe before we need to, you know, after we've gotten our initial airport, that, that we're going to see more construction to make it a 10-passenger vehicle?
I think the next move is actually in the hands of the airline. The airline indicated publicly about a few days ago that they are seeing Prescott as a place for expansion. So if we hear that that's happening, then it's time for us to go back into discussions about phasing it. It'll involve an environmental process. And we can start that environmental process to be simultaneous with the construction of the terminal. We are also going to have another major project going on, and that's the taxiway Charlie realignment, that will be in design in February for one year and go out at the, in next February for bid. That's estimated to be $13 million. So we are going to have these massive infusions of work and capital into the airport right now. So I think this is a good step and a good simultaneous process for multiple capital improvements right now. It's, it's about, I think it's, we've bitten off just as much as we can chew, and we're chewing pretty fast.
It sounds like it's been well thought out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Lamerson.
Thank you, Mayor. Robin, you might as well stand up there. At the end of the day, you know, that's what it's all about. You're on stage. Are you getting any federal pushback?
No.
Thank you. Fact of the matter is, the feds are working with us very well.
Yes.
And it's going to continue that way. Okay?
Yes.
So at the end of the day, things are going well for the city of Prescott. They're going well for what the federal government wants stationed here, for a reason. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
Well, a great presentation, very exciting. Thank you all for your work. I see some others out there. Steve Rutherford, who was helpful as well in your design phase. This has been a regional cooperative effort, and what a tremendous job on behalf of some of our older members. This has been a long time coming. Is that fair? No, that have been on the council a long time. I didn't mean-
It's been, let me put it this way. It's been 18 years-
Say both.
Since I started talking about it, and-
Say that again.
It's been 18 years since I started talking about it. But, you know, government moves slow. And since we've got Robin here, she's taken my breath away of how fast she can move.
Thank you. And my team, they're amazing. And we love working with our industrial, our Airport Advisory Committee, Michael Getty. Thank you for your support, as well as Steve. It really has been a team effort, and it's been a regional effort. And honestly, without an amazing council and a, and a mayor and a city manager, this couldn't have happened. It is your win, too.
Well, we look forward to 2019. A lot of great things on the horizon. The airport and this terminal is going to be one of them. So thank you all for your work.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to item 3B.
Discussion regarding creating a commercial tourism temporary sign-free zone.
Is that going to just show what's on the screen, then? On that screen. There we go. All right. Well, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm going to try and keep this to 16 minutes, so we can let Mark have his full hour. So this is, this, we're talking about temporary signs in the right-of-way. It's not, not part of this discussion are, is the land development code and temporary signs, you know, on, on private property. So as you all know, we have, the city code prohibits temporary signs in the right-of-way, with one exception, and that is the A-frame signs that are in the downtown business district. The, the, the problem with our, our code is that there's a state law that allows for temporary political signs in rights-of-way, for the most part, and prevents us from removing, defacing, covering, altering those signs. So the way the two, the ordinance and the state law work together is, is we can ban those signs in the right-of-way, but we can't remove them as a function of code enforcement. So what we have to do when campaigns put signs in the right-of-way, if they meet the criteria, is we have to send a letter or contact the campaign. We have to ask them to voluntarily remove. And then, if they don't voluntarily remove, we have to issue a citation. As a function of Supreme Court case law and constitutional law, we have to then allow for, or use the same type of enforcement for other temporary signs, like business signs or other signs that aren't necessarily tied to a political campaign. We can't treat signs differently because of content. So that's where we kind of, we get stuck. And as, as we've talked about in the past, in this last election, this last general election, we had a lot of signs, a lot of campaigns, a lot of propositions, a lot of organizations from out of state. So it just made it really difficult for our, our limited code enforcement resources to, to really get a handle on it. And essentially, you know, I think you'd all agree, it kind of got away from us in, in terms of these signs, temporary, mostly political signs in the right-of-way. The one thing that the state law does, does allow us to do is create what's called the commercial tourism zone or district in the city. We can create up to two, two zones for a total of three square miles. And in that, if, we would do that by a, you would do that by a resolution. And what, what that does is basically where there's a high incidence or high area of tourism and commercial, visitor commercial uses, you would make a determination that in those areas, or that area, the, the proliferation of political signs is, is a negative effect on the aesthetics of the area. So you could essentially ban signs in those commercial tourism zones as a function of the state statute, which would then allow our code enforcement folks to simply remove those signs. So three square miles is the total, as I mentioned, is the maximum.
Excuse me, John. Could I ask you a question?
Sure.
Real quick. Are we talking about just political signs or all signs?
Well, we're talking, well, we're talking about we ban all temporary signs in the right-of-way under city code. The state law says we have to allow political signs during campaign season, which is primarily, you know, it's about July through December, after the general election. So during that timeframe, we, we can, we can still ban them, but we can't remove them physically, if they meet criteria. But because of Reed versus Gilbert, we can't treat signs that have a different content, like a commercial sign, differently than we would treat a political sign.
So this would be all signs?
So this would be all, so once we're able to ban, if, if you adopt this commercial tourism zone, if, if, if we're able to ban those in those zones, that would, it would apply to all signs where we would remove, we could remove those from, our code enforcement could remove those from these down, from these business, or this commercial tourism area. You're smirking.
Haven't we gone over this before? You know, and I think about the, the permanent temporary signs in, in the downtown area. Those would, you know, if in fact we reacted to this, those would, you know, leave too.
When it's not campaign season, we, we, we would remove any, any temporary signs in the right-of-way. During campaign season, we can't remove those because of state law. And therefore, in order to, to get rid of them, we have to essentially-
So it's all or nothing?
Sort of. During that time period of the campaign, and as we had the discussion in the past about our land development code, those signs can be, can, can really, there could be a lot of signs out there during campaigns, particularly in the, on the general elections in the, yeah, every two years, whether it's national or statewide elections.
I appreciate you letting me interrupt you. I just needed to have that clarified. Thank you.
So, yes.
So we can do, like, do a two-mile zone around the courthouse square?
Well, okay, that's what I'm showing you here. So-
And another mile around, like, the entrance into town up where the mall is.
Possibly. Or the airport, for instance. So let me just tell you what, what you're looking at here. The blue, the blue line on the map is our downtown business district. Okay? Our red line on the map is our entertainment zone or entertainment district. That's a square mile. So that's, that, you can see that, it's in your packet, too, this map. But I wanted to show it so the, the public could see it. So you have a one-square-mile already kind of area that is this red lawn, which is our entertainment zone. Two square miles is this, is this yellow box. So it's pretty big. But if you notice in the upper, sort of the right-hand corner, I think that doesn't work. So where it's, where you see where it says two miles vertically, and there's an arrow pointing down, that, on the map, on the right-hand side of the map, that's, that's girly Sheldon split. And you all know, if you ever drove that during the campaign, that there were hundreds of signs- of signs in that area. So we could carve out a two-mile or less, two-square-mile or smaller area in the, that's sort of centered on the courthouse to cover those high, those high-traffic areas, and then it would allow us essentially another square mile or square mile plus to put somewhere else. And one of the, one of the areas could be the Highway 69 entry into town. The other area could be maybe out at the airport. It's your call. So the question is, is this something that you'd be interested in doing? And if so, is this, is, you know, do you want, by the way, the green box is three square miles. So it's massive area in the downtown, probably unnecessary for what we're talking about in terms of high tourism, high visitor visibility type areas.
But you could do two miles down here in this yellow, and you could do a one-mile square up north.
Good, near the airport.
Do two separate ones.
Do you determine that that's a heavy visitor or tourism area as an entry to town by vehicle traffic, as an entry to town by airport traffic, 27,000 people coming and going? Plus, if hotels and things build up in the area, I think you, I think it'd be fair for you, you could make that decision.
Councilman Lamerson?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I just sitting here thinking, listening to John, believe it or not, I do listen to the guy. You brought up a comment about campaign season. Okay, between federal, state, county, city, referendums, initiatives, school boards, et cetera, when isn't there a campaign season in Prescott?
Well, there would have to be an actual election going on, so technically-
There always is. Every day, there always is.
Well, sort, there are four election dates, as we all know, four consolidated election dates in the year, March, May, August, and November. So if there's an actual election, whether it's a school, school board, a school bond and a special election, where there's a special city election, the state and national elections are always August, November, as you know, every other year.
I think you covered that pretty good, because I think by code, it's three months before or after or something. So four, four times three is 12. You got it, all 12 months. That's what we just said.
In theory, it could be, it could be year-round, yeah, it could be year-round, in theory, if there's an actual election. And that's the problem. I mean, you know, with local elections and local candidates, it's, to bounce with you, it's been easier in the past getting compliance with our rules, because everybody's local. But with these national campaigns, every two years and even numbered years, you know, you don't know what kind of money comes in, where it comes from, particularly when there's propositions. It's just very difficult, you know, to work with those folks who, you know, who are from out of state dumping money in on propositions or candidates and things like that. So that's, that's the challenge, you know, in terms of, if you want our right-of-way sign ban to really mean something and have effect, when it really means something and has effect is during the elections. That's when most of the temporary signs go up. And so you can't, we can't do it citywide. I think we're 49 square miles total, but you can do it in key areas that I think have the most visibility and have the most aesthetic, or the impact on aesthetics.
I appreciate your comments, John. I just, you know, every time I think about you, and I think about you wearing your uniform, I think about the things that people like Phil Good have done. You know, isn't it great, we live in America where it's okay? It is okay. And, you know, at the end of the day, if somebody wants to say something, and they have a right to stick it on a piece of, you know, there's a difference between private property and public property.
Exactly right.
At the end of the day, being a municipal corporation, we have private property rights as a corporation. We can say we don't want this stuff on our property, but on private property, it's a different issue.
And this does, like I said, to start, this is strictly in city right-of-way.
Thanks for the comment.
Councilman Good?
Yeah, I was just a little concerned in a couple of different issues. Number one, the power of incumbency is a strong power when it comes to the political process. And as we contemplate banning all signs, it makes that incumbency power even more, more strong, because unknown people will have that much more difficulty trying to get their name recognized. The second concern I have is the fact that we've had this moratorium on code enforcement since the Gilbert decision. So we're experiencing not only the proliferation of political signs, but also nonpolitical signs that haven't really been code enforced. So I'd kind of like to see that code enforcement be reinstated and enforced more aggressively so that we can compare what the true problem is. And at that point, if even with good code enforcement, we're still dealing with growing proliferation of these signs, then we might want to institute such a program as this.
Well, I guess my reaction, the second comment is that our current land development code is very restrictive, and that's why the council, prior to this, adopted a moratorium on enforcing that. That moratorium has expired. So now we still have this rather strict, rather strict land development code regulations on private property, whether it's commercial or residential. This, again, applies strictly to the city rights-of-way. I, what my understanding is, is that community development in the near future is going to bring back some proposed ideas for revising the land development code to allow for some more flexibility on signage that can go on private property, whether it's residential or commercial. But I think, the reason I bring this forward is, is the last time we had this discussion, there was a lot of concern and consternation about signs in the right-of-way. So that's why I'm bringing this forward. Again, nothing to do with private property, strictly city right-of-way.
I get that, but I see a lot of temporary signs in the city right-of-way that have been placed, a lot of those real high-flag type of signs that are in the right-of-way, and we're just in the process of reinstituting some code enforcement so that business owners realize they can't put those there.
And I would propose that most, in the non-political sign, temporary signs, most of them are events in town. And so if, you know, if we're going to, if we're going to take the sort of zero-tolerance approach on temporary signs in the right-of-way, then there's probably going to have to be some sort of education approach to say, hey, and you may, again, so your policy decision is if you're going to be sort of zero-tolerance on right-of-way signs, you'll maybe loosen up the regulations on private property signage for events or other temporary or political signs or other temporary-type signs. So you kind of try and find that balance, but remove them from the rights-of-way, which, you know, and there are problems in some of the right-of-way signs that create, you know, health, safety concerns. A lot of it's just aesthetics, though. There's just, there's just 50, 60 signs at a busy intersection. So that's where this kind of tool that the state law gives us and allows you to make that decision, you know, allows us to sort of, in a fairly limited area, you know, three square miles out of 49, that's what, something less than 10%? You know, I mean, it's less, it's less than 10% of the city. It's maybe 5% of the city. I don't know what the math would work out.
I know, but you're probably talking about 80% of the high-traffic arteries.
Maybe.
Yeah.
Which is good.
Councilman Sishka?
Thank you. I won't interrupt you this time, John. You know, if I were king, I wouldn't have signs in any public right-of-way. They'd be private property signs, and the people who believe in you would allow you to put your sign there, and the people who didn't, wouldn't. But the truth of the matter is, is that where we basically ran afoul last time was in the downtown district, where there are all sorts of permanent temporary signs out on the street. You know, there was a big hullabaloo about, oh my gosh, I'm going to go out of business if I don't have my sign out in the street for Sandra to trip over. So I guess where do we, where do we find a midpoint in this situation? Or is there a midpoint?
I think that what this resolution would do would still defer to our, would still defer to our city code, which would continue to allow the A-frame sign in the downtown business district.
Right.
Right? So the resolution could do that, create that exception, because that's not based on content, that's based on one A-frame sign within a certain size, within a certain location per storefront. So we could still, we could still allow, we could allow that, you could allow that to rub in and place. That would suggest you do. And probably legally, not probably, legally, a resolution can't undo an ordinance. So this would, this would, in the rest of the area, which would include the downtown business district, you know, it would, it would prevent or prohibit any other types of temporary signs in the right-of-way. And eventually, I mean, something to think about, sort of off-topic, but is, you know, if you wanted to expand that, that A-frame signage, you could always expand it to, so it mirrors the entertainment district. As the downtown area gets kind of bigger and more walkable, those A-frame signs are really pedestrian-oriented, not car-oriented. So that's something to think about, to increase those opportunities for folks who have businesses in that, in this, sort of in the downtown area where it's mostly pedestrian-oriented. But separate topic for another day. So this, it's really up to you now, if you want to give direction, we can come back with the resolution at some point.
Well, I have to be honest with you, I wouldn't, you know, with that caveat, I wouldn't object at all to, you know, some form of what we're talking about.
All right. Do you have any other comment?
No, sir.
Councilman Scholl?
Thanks, Mayor. My question for you, John, is if we were to pursue this, would there be an effort to return the signs to their owners if we were to remove them?
If there, well, I would defer the code, historically, code enforcement has done that. Signs, even to, signs have to have contact information on them. Many, many, many don't. So, you know, you wouldn't be able to necessarily return those, but if there's an email or a phone number or something, you know, historically, our code enforcement folks would usually contact the campaign people and say, hey, we have your sign in our yard, you can come pick it up.
Okay. That's good to know.
Yeah. I mean, what I'm told is at the end of campaign season, they're used for target practice. If people don't pick them up, but I can't verify that.
I can.
Councilman Blair?
Yeah, I think that we need to move past this. I think the biggest thing we have a problem with is education. And the education part comes from all these folks around the state. And if we're firm on two miles around downtown and a mile at the airport, that's pretty easy to figure out. So anybody that does that's in violation, they come down, period. There's no second guessing it with code enforcement. Sandwiched signs stay, and then we move ahead with these banner signs, or you say, you called it special event signs. I too agree the fact that they shouldn't be right in your face in an intersection. There's private property all around these intersections, and the person that's advertising their project should visit with that person and be allowed to put it on their private property if the private property owner wants it to. Otherwise, they're outlawed, period, outright, and quit having all this flexibility for every Joe that walks down the street. And I think this covers the main tenet of what we ran into this year and every single year thereafter. So I support that.
Good comment. Mayor Protem?
Yes, I agree with Councilman Blair. I took, I like the two miles, like the one mile out by the airport. I also like the fact that this allows us to enforce this, because you don't have to go through the ordeal of sending a letter, making a call, what all that is, you can just simply pull that sign if it's in this area, because it violates it. And so I appreciate that opportunity, so I would, I definitely would like to just go forward.
I want to use the words highly dislike instead of hate, but I highly dislike political signs and politicians in a parade, now which I've done both. But I would agree with the two-mile around downtown and the one mile out at the airport. Any other questions or comments for John? Do you have direction that you need?
I have enough direction at this point.
Okay. You took more than 16 minutes.
Zero questions.
And now Woodfill's mad at you, so.
It's pretty standard.
So we'd like to have a little break before the next meeting.
That's too bad.
Mr. Woodfill, so how about, you know, you've got about 45 minutes?
It's not my presentation, it's Mr. Dotson.
Oh, Mr. Dotson, oh, sorry. Mr. Dotson, 45 minutes?
So we'll get started quick. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Craig Dotson, Public Works. This afternoon, we have David Davis here with us. He's going to talk trash with us. This is part of our water, wastewater and solid waste review that's going on currently. And Dave is a subconsultant to Entellus, who's our, who our contract is with that. We'll introduce Dave and let him get going on his.
Thank you very much. I guess I should have, should have worn my Christmas tie today. My name is David Davis, and I am with MSW Consultants. We are subconsultants to Raftelis Financial Consultants, and we've been performing the solid waste rate study for the city. Just want to do a quick overview. Okay. So today, what I'm going to do is talk a little bit about the background of the study, the objectives, what we're trying to accomplish, the work that we did, some of the assumptions that we made as part of our work. And then we have kind of a macro-micro aspect going on. The financial plan has to do with the solid waste enterprise fund and how this study affects the city kind of on an aggregate basis and its cash balance and things like that. And then we're going to talk about the rate adjustments, which has to go more to the micro side of things, which, how it impacts your individual customers, your rate payers, and how much they pay for their solid waste collection service. We're also going to talk about the rates in other cities that other providers are charging, and then we've got some other recommendations. And throughout this presentation, there's a couple of themes I'd like you to just keep in the back of your mind. One is stability, and the other one is competitiveness. And I'll just touch on those as I go through this. So as far as the background, you know, within the city, there's a solid waste enterprise fund, and it's like its own little private company, right? It's got its own balance sheet, it has its own source of revenue, it incurs revenue and expenses, it's got a profit and a cash balance. And within that enterprise fund, there's three operating divisions. There's the transfer station, there's the residential sector, and the commercial sector. And in addition to just the regular trash collection that the city provides, the city kind of does things that other private companies don't do. It does a household hazardous waste collection event, it services the downtown trash receptacles, it does a brush cleanup, it does, when the city has special events, like the Cowboy Poetry Festival, it, you know, provides service for that. So there's things that the city does that, in ways, it is like a private company, that enterprise fund, but in other ways, it's not. It kind of does a few extra things. So as far as our study, there are certain objectives that we're trying to accomplish. We're trying to look at the nexus between the cost of service and the rates that we charge. And the thing about these solid waste studies is that we'll have some objectives, but sometimes you can't optimally solve all the objectives. So for example, recycling service, we want to provide an incentive for people to recycle, but we charge half of what it costs to do a refuse collection. Well, it doesn't cost half, right? So we're really kind of departing from that objective of tying the nexus of those costs and what we charge to another objective of creating an incentive for people to recycle, which is something else we're trying to accomplish. So there's all these objectives, and they sometimes compete with each other, and we try and find the optimal balance among those objectives. So we're looking at the revenue and expenses. We put together a financial plan that basically entailed a spreadsheet model. And what we did is, we took all your financial and operational information, put it into this model so that it runs different scenarios. And then we spent a lot of time with city staff. We probably had six or seven conference calls over the phone, where we get the model up on the screen. We say, hey, what about this situation? What about that situation? What about these trucks we need to buy, and things like that? So we go through all these different scenarios. So I want to make sure that you understand, this is not just Dave Davis at MSW Consultants telling you what I think we should do. I've worked collaboratively with city staff, and I've enjoyed it, and I think we've come up with a pretty good work product. So we've designed rates to achieve the objectives that we set out. And then, as far as the assumptions that are in the model, just briefly, we're assuming that costs are going to go up about 3% for inflation. We're projecting that your population grows about 1.8% per year. We've got some capital expenditures that I'll talk about. Some of those have been funded with debt, others have been funded just out of the city's reserves. So typically, what we've done out into the future is, when an asset costs more than $100,000, we'll debt-finance that, so that'll kind of smooth the cost of that vehicle over about five years. So in the financial plan, I'm going to show you what it looks like if you were not, if you were just leave rates the same. I'm going to show you what's going to happen to your enterprise fund. I'm going to summarize the rate adjustments, and then towards the end, I'll show you what will happen to your enterprise fund if you do do these rate adjustments. So I'm going to start out and look at a chart. This is your vehicle purchase history, and this is important because I'm going to recommend some rate adjustments, and the things that are really driving this is your- And the things that are really driving this is your capital expenditure plan. And these black, or these squares represent purchases of vehicles. And what I kind of want to bring to your attention is kind of the white, more of the white area between 2009 and 2014. So typically, for a refuse collection company, you want to have your trucks, you want to buy a few trucks every year, so that you kind of balance your truck expenditure out. But, for some reason, we were just making these trucks last as long as possible, and that's another comment that I have. You know, look at the average life of these vehicles. Overall, it's 13 years. I look at a lot of trash companies, I audit them, and I see the trucks that they run. It's pretty unusual to make a truck last 13 years. Typically, seven, eight, nine years, they're putting trucks into the spare fleet, and then they'll be a spare for a couple of years, and by the time they're 13 years old, they're typically selling them for, you know, $25,000, $30,000, whatever they can get. So I just want to make sure that you understand, we've got a lot of capital expenditures, and that's what's driving a lot of the proposed rate adjustments. But it's, it's, it's one of these things where you have a certain amount of inertia that you really can't avoid. You've got to start replacing these trucks, because one of the things that's super important for a solid waste service provider is provide reliable service. So, when you've got a 13-year-old truck, and oftentimes, if it unexpectedly breaks down, you've got a reliability problem. So that's why most trash companies will start to rotate their trucks out seven to nine years. So here's what that looks like in money. It's about $5.6 million over five years. And these are the amounts of money that each truck will cost in the year that they're projected to be purchased. And something that's interesting I want to point out is that, right now, we're in the middle of fiscal 2019, and we've already purchased about a million dollars' worth of trucks, and those have been purchased out of the, out of the enterprise fund reserves. So that column there, even though it says projected, that's pretty much happened already. So what this is, is the first part of the financial plan. What this graph shows is the amount of revenue and expense in your solid waste enterprise fund. So, the blue is your operating revenue, and the light green is your operating expenses, right? So, when your operating revenue is greater than your operating expenses, that's good, because you're operating out of profit. But what happens is, is that dark green, that's the fixed, or that's the capital expenditures that came out of your cash reserve. So it's not an ongoing operating expense, but it is cash that's coming out of your enterprise fund. So whenever the green bars are higher than the blue, your cash is going to go down. So, for example, like in 2019, when you spent that million dollars to buy those trucks, you can see that's in that dark green box on the top of the green. So you had more cash going out than coming in, so that depleted your reserves. So for example, at the end of 2017, you had almost $5 million in cash reserves. That was depleted about $2 million in 2018, and then that last leg down there, that's the million dollars that you've spent in trucks in fiscal 2019. So, if you just kept rates the way that they are, and you purchased all these vehicles that we have in this schedule, what's going to happen is, this enterprise fund is going to run out of money probably at the end, about two years from now. Okay? The yellow line is what I call the target balance. So what we try and do is, we set a, a target that we want to stay above in the enterprise fund. That's usually 25%. I like to see higher, but 25% is really a minimum that you want to keep as far as a reserve balance in an enterprise fund like this. So, here's the rate adjustments that we're proposing in order to avoid having the enterprise fund run out of money in a couple of years. On the residential, we're proposing that we increase the residential rate $1 per month for each of the next five years. On the commercial side, I want to show you this, but we're going to restructure the, proposing that we restructure the trash rates. But we want to have the revenue go up about 5% or 6% on the commercial side, and at the same time, restructure your commercial rates. So what that means is that people with larger dumpsters are going to get less of an increase. And then on the recycle rate, even though there's some turmoil in the recycling markets that you've probably heard about, we're still going to have the recycle rate be half of the trash rate, to continue to encourage people to, on the commercial side, recycle. On the transfer station, right now, the rate is $63 a ton, when you go to the transfer station, and that's what we charge to other companies that use the transfer station. I'm recommending that we increase that rate to $69 in the first year, and then $1 per, on the tipping fee, $1 a ton for each year thereafter. So I just want to show you your historical residential rates, and this, this is kind of tied in a little bit with, with the not purchasing the trucks. The residential rate was $14 for just years and years and years. In 2017, it was raised, and now it's $15. Now, this does not include, there's a 50 cent surcharge on top of that rate for, to pay for the maintenance of your closed landfill. So what this shows is just the amount of money that goes to pay for the collection service on the residential side. And the lighter bars here represent what we're proposing. Now, the rates, what we're proposing will go into effect March 1st of 2019. So that bar, where it says 2019 at 15, it really should be up there at 16, and that would be March 1st of 2019. And then, what we're recommending is that the rates are adjusted March 1st of 2019, and they stay into effect for about 16 months. So it'll be, it'll, they'll stay into effect for longer than one year on that first adjustment. And then they'd go up a dollar every year until 2024. So here's what that looks like in the amount. So you can see the top, it shows about a dollar a month. We're proposing that the green cart be increased by about 5%, and the landfill closure fee is going to stay the same. And then, the blue cart is also going to continue to be no charge. So what we did is, we looked at some other cities, and to see what rates were being charged. And what this bar shows is the cities across the bottom and the monthly rate on the vertical axis. And what this shows is that the current rate, the, the two bars on the far left are the current rate you have now at 15, and the proposed rate at 16. And then these are compared to other haulers and other cities in the area, and then also outside of the area. So what this basically shows is that, even after raising it a dollar, you're still going to be within the range of what other cities are charging for the same type of service. On the commercial side, the commercial rates are based on the size of your container, and how often that container gets collected every week. So, it's a little different than the residential rates, so there's kind of a matrix of commercial rates. And what this chart shows is the rate for once-a-week service for the different sizes of containers that you offer. So, at the top of the chart, it, it shows the rate for a two-yard bin right now, which is $32.07. And then it shows that March 1st, we're proposing that that goes up to $37.89, which those customers would experience a $5.82, or not 82%, but $5.82 per month increase. Now, you may notice that the people that have an eight-yard bin, they're only going to get a $3.31 charge. And the reason for that is because the structure of your rates has, it's based on only your variable costs. So the actual structure of your cost of service is, it costs a certain amount of money to go out and get a truck and put it in front of a bin. And that's probably half or more of your cost. The other part of your cost varies with the size of the bin and the amount of trash that you collect. So the way that your rates are set now, it's based completely on the number of yards of service, the number of yards of the bin. So what that results in is, the, the rates for the lower-sized containers are actually lower than your actual cost of service. And the larger containers, the, the rates that you're receiving is higher than your cost of service. So let me show you what that looks like. This is your, this is the first year of a phase in, or this is actually the current rates. So the brown represents the cost of service to serve that particular bin. So you can see the cost of getting a truck, you know, you got a truck and a driver, it's insured and maintained, you get that in front of a two-yard bin, you know, that costs just as much as getting a truck in front of an eight-yard bin. So, what this shows is that you're losing money on the two-yard bins, and, but you're making that up on the eight-yard bins. So you might think, well, let's just change it all at once, right? Well, I'd like to not do that. So what I've proposed is that you restructure your rates over time, and it's, I'm going to tab through these, there's about five slides here that show the change in this over the next five years. So it would go like this, like this. So at the end of five years, you're back in sync, but you're not making, this is the stability part of the theme, where we're trying to not change people's rates all at once, and just kind of get where you need to be over a reasonable amount of time. Now, in looking at your rates compared to other cities, you're still very competitive. What this chart shows is, the first two bars on the left of each of these groups of bars is the city of Prescott's current rate for a two-yard bin once a week. And then, the dark red bar is what we're proposing, and then the other bars are information about commercial service that we're able to gather from other jurisdictions. And what's interesting is that, because in Arizona, commercial service is required to be competitive, right? Cities aren't allowed to just have a monopoly on commercial service. So for that reason, there's not a lot of information about rates in other cities, so, but what we were able to gather is from Flagstaff, Scottsdale, Paradise Valley, which was, they had a competitive proposal, and we got some information from, from that. So the bottom line is, you're still pretty competitive. Even after restructuring your rates, raising them to pay for these new trucks, you're still pretty competitive in relation to other service providers. So on the transfer station, so the top line shows the standard rate per ton for somebody coming into the transfer station. Right now, it's $63 a ton. We're proposing that goes up to $69 a ton, and then gradually increase it thereafter. And then also, we've got a minimum load charge that we'd like to gradually increase. The rate for clean brush, we'd like to keep it where it is, at $59. And then, the clean inert, that's going to go from $15 to 20, and then, just a little bit af- after that, and it's going to, $2.50 per ton thereafter. So, this ties back to that graph that I showed you earlier, where you were going to run out of money in two years. So, if we increase these rates, the dollar per month for residential, and then restructure your commercial rates, and then add that $6 to the transfer station, your green line, it's going to stay above the yellow line, which is what we're trying to do. We're trying to keep the actual cash reserves stay above that 25% reserve, which is a, a pretty conservative reserve balance to have. So it's, and nobody can accuse you of hoarding money or anything like this. You're just, all you're doing is just keeping your head above water. Just some other things I'd like to recommend. I want to talk about a shared bin rate stabilization fee, some compactor rates, and just show you the fees for special services. So what happens now is, you, you may have some customers, especially in the downtown area, where they have one bin, and maybe three businesses share that bin, or four. And what happens is, is you have these three businesses, they're sharing a bin, they're all being billed individually by the city, and they're all paying a third of the regular rate, which is fair. But what happens is, is if one, one space goes vacant, and maybe it's vacant for six months, what the city has historically done, just to stabilize the rates of the remaining two people, is to say, well, instead of dividing it by half and raising everybody by, what, 50%, that just, the city would absorb the cost of that vacant unit until it got reoccupied. So, there's a cost to that. And so what we're proposing is that if people want to share bins and create that, it's, it's a little bit of administrative burden for the city to send two bills instead of one, and, you know, if somebody doesn't pay, and then they get caught up, and things like this. And the other thing is, if the city absorbs, if the city has a practice of absorbing that cost of vacant units, you know, that kind of gets subsidized by all the rest of the rate payers. So, you know, in talking about this with staff, and looking at what, what happens at other companies, we thought a, a fair approach would be, let's charge an extra 20%. So, if you want to share a bin, and you want the city to divide up the cost, and you want the city to absorb and take the risk of paying for that vacant unit, then we thought it'd be fair to increase that fee by 20%. Now, if you don't want to do that, like I'm saying you, but I'm saying if a business doesn't want to do that, they can say, well, let's just bill, choose one of the people, and they're the lead person, the city will send them a bill, they can be responsible for it. It's kind of like renting an apartment, where you have one person who rents it, and maybe they have, you know, subtenants. And then they don't have to pay the 20%, and they can work it out among themselves. And then if one of the, one of the units goes vacant, instead of, you know, them just absorbing that, then they would just pay half instead of paying a third where they did before. The other thing we're going to recommend is that we set up a separate, set of rates for people with compactors. And what these are is, somebody can buy a machine, and they'll use it on their bin, and it's a compactor, right? It smashes the trash, and basically, the ratio is three to one. So, the good news is, is because you can smash more trash in there, the truck has to come and get it less often. The bad news is, is when the truck comes to get it, it's three times as heavy. So it's not really fair to charge the same rate for a compacted bin as it is for a non-compacted bin. So, but instead of, you can't just, we're just going to increase it by three, because there are some savings related to, you know, using a compactor. Plus, we also want to provide people an incentive to use a compactor, because if, if, if they can have fewer truck trips, then that's just less truck traffic in your city. So we've designed these rates for people that have compactors. Then finally, I apologize, this is so small. These are fees for special services. So, when the city has a special event, or somebody needs some kind of extra something related to solid waste collection, that's not part of what we do as far as standard service, we set these fees up, so it's just kind of fair to everybody, and we can design a package for that customer that's based on this set of fees. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Questions or comments from the council? Any trash talk? No? You must have done a great job presenting.
All right. Well, Merry Christmas, everybody.
Yeah. Merry Christmas. Thank you.
And just to clarify where this goes from here, on January 22nd, along when we consider water and sewer rates, this will be brought forward for council to act on, as proposed today.
I have one question now. What does that mean to the average Joe's water, sewer, trash bill? An extra $5 a month?
First year, we were talking about a dollar more in water, a dollar more in sewer, and a dollar more in trash, so $3 a month. Although they won't be taking effect, they'll all be taking effect March 1st. The solid waste study contemplates July 1st, new rate starting in 2021 after the first one, where the water and wastewater will become effective January 1st.
It's a five-year deal.
We, that's what we would propose, is council just look at it, it's a five-year study, take a look at it, adopt all five years' worth of rate increases now, so they can happen, and we can go forward with the financial plan.
So roughly, in five years, the resident's paying $15 more for trash, sewer, and water?
Roughly, really, really roughly, but it really depends on their usage of water.
When I get that, I, I think it's fair that the people out there that are on a fixed income, or look at their monthly bills, would understand it's going to be $3 a month more every single year.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
You just pinned down Woodfill on a future dollar amount projection.
I saw that.
On the record.
Counsel will be adopting it, so you pinned yourself down.
He found a way to weasel out of that one, didn't he?
Councilman Lamerson.
Thank you. Mark, don't, don't, don't sit down, please.
This is Craig's thing.
At the end of the day, since you're the bean counter for the city, do you have any idea what it costs for the city to deliver the trash pickup? You know, we've got to buy the trucks, we got to pay the personnel, we got to pay the retirements, we got to do all this stuff. Go out and pick up somebody's garbage on a monthly basis? What it costs this city to deliver that service?
And that's exactly what's in this study, and that's the $16.
I mean, if I wanted in the public record, here's what it costs to deliver this product that you're getting for this little, every month.
Exactly. And, and while we're talking about the public record, this report has actually been on our website since January 21st, it's out there. It's out there for all the, I'm sorry, November.
Okay. I'll try one more time. What does it cost the city every month on the average trash pickup to go pick up somebody's garbage anywhere in a town? What does it cost? 30, 40 bucks?
It costs the rates that we presented here today.
Okay. You didn't say the number. What does it cost?
Well, residential would be $16. Commercial depends on the size of the dumpster. Would you like to look at the rate schedules again?
I've got them right here in front of me. That's not the point. I want you to state, here's what it costs. It costs 40 bucks to go deliver something. We're charging how much? 16 bucks? Give me a break.
We're charging 15. Now, we're proposing to take it to 16.
Well, that's my point. And they're getting a value of X amount of dollars. It costs us money for the employees, the trucks, the whole nine yards. And the public needs to hear that. They're being subsidized for us to go do that. They couldn't do it on their own for that kind of money.
Or in the private sector.
Any other questions or comments from the council? All right. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.